Hello, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, July 8th. The time is 7:30 PM. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, equal to all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the role?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Bailey.
Here.
Four members present. Council Vice President De Cruz is absent.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve for A, B, and C.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries and brings us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve item five, consent agenda.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries as well. Item six is licenses. Six A, a resolution granting a Class F 19-hour beverage license to Monsignor Clark School for the taste and tasting event to be held on Saturday, September 14th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM on the back lawn or in the gymnasium at Monsignor Clark School, 5074 Tower Hill Road, Wakefield. Application by Sarah Marshall.
Hi, I'm Sarah Marshall.
Welcome back.
We are once again, this would be our fourth annual, kind of hard to believe, four years have gone by since we created this event. But just to give you some background, the event was created to engage the community, to bring alum back, to keep people engaged year after year, and of course, to create much-needed funds for Monsignor Clark. So we're working with Sweeney's once again this year, working with many local businesses. It is open to the public, so we are once again hoping for approval. And I do have a save the date if you guys need it. I didn't know if you needed any backup.
We're probably okay. Any questions? Very good. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve six A.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
And now we have a number of public hearings tonight. Public hearing seven A is relative to an application for expansion of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956. This is an application for expansion of a Class B vixxular liquor license by Bombay LLC, doing business as Bombay Flame Restaurant, 60 Old Tower Hill Road in Wakefield, by Farhan Hussein, manager for the dining, bar, and lounge areas. An exterior seating along the front of the building consisting of four tables of four with a total additional capacity of 16 persons in accordance with a special use permit granted May 15th, 2019 by the zoning board of review and further defined in a site plan dated May 23rd, 2019, on file in town clerk's office. Said expansion is contingent upon compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes, and user fees in arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. Dale, do we need to read in anything to the record? All right. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Muttaya Subaya. I'm one of the partner from Bombay LLC. And we want to make some extra seating outside with like a waiting area, see if someone want to drink any beer or anything. So that's why we're here.
Would you mind speaking up a little bit? The fans are a little hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Muttaya Subaya. I'm one of the partner from Bombay LLC. And we want to put some extra tables for the waiting area. Sometimes the people comes at the same time. If anybody want to drink some beer or anything, wines, we don't want to serve any beer, sorry, any food outside. It's like a waiting area.
Thank you, Dale. So any questions on this application?
How is business going so far?
So far, very good. Thank you.
So these will be out sort of in front?
Yes. We have a lot of space, like 37 feet from the road to our property.
Do you plan to serve meals as well in those tables?
Not really. We don't want to serve alcohol too, but sometimes, you know, you can't control it. If anybody wants to take a beer outside, we don't want to serve any food outside. It's a hard time to bring the food outside to serve.
Well, if there are no questions from the council, then this is a public hearing. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this issue, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and let us know. Otherwise, I would...
I just have one question. You prefer not to serve food there, but you will have the ability to serve food if people wanted it?
Yes, but for the reason we want to put the table outside, just a main purpose to put the waiting area, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So I just have one question about that for the solicitor, if I may. So liquor is tied to food, correct? Okay. So he would have to offer the ability to serve food at those tables to be in compliance? Am I off-base? Okay. All right. Just want to caution...
Yeah, we can serve the food also.
That they would have to be, you would have to offer food?
Yes, definitely. That's a full restaurant and bar.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing then?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. And do I hear a motion on seven A?
Motion to approve seven A.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. And do I hear a motion on seven A?
Motion to approve seven A.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Seven B is a public hearing relative to an application for expansion of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956. This is for Class T legitimate theater liquor license, application for expansion by the Contemporary Theater, 321 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Terry Simpson, president of the Board of Directors for the expanded outside patio area modification of 321 Main Street and Theater in adjacent building at 327 Main Street in accordance with special use permits granted by the zoning board of review on May 15th and June 2019 and June 21st of 2017 and February 21st of 2012, with sales of alcohol limited to one hour prior to the performance and during the performance, but prohibited after the performance in the building used for the theater performances, and as further defined in a site plan dated June 4th, 2019, on file in the town clerk's office. Said expansion is contingent upon compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees in arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. Welcome, Terry.
Hello, I'm Terry Simpson. I'm the president of the Contemporary Theater Company and the chairman of the board. Our liquor service in the theater stops with the end of the performance, but outside is one hour after, as allowed by state law. We're here today, I'm here today to ask that we be able to expand the area of service outside on the patio. We're currently serving alcohol on the patio. We received that license two years ago, but we actually used it last year. It came too late for us in the first year. We have since expanded the size of the patio by about 40 percent, probably added the ability to seat another 40 people. I'm not sure that that will happen, but we wanted to make the patio bigger for performance, and now we would like to be able to serve alcohol in that expanded area. We did submit with our application a site plan. I don't know, have you received that in your packages?
Yeah.
If you don't have it and you have questions, I have extras and I can give them to you. I also today had photos taken of the expansion of the area, if that would be helpful, I'd be happy to hand those out to you.
Sure. I'd like to see it. Terry, you're still in the confined space, correct? The ordoned-off area.
With the expansion, we have added a walkway on the perimeter of the patio adjacent to the parking lot. We have put a wooden pergola over that. That's only been up now for a little over a month. We plan to put vegetation on that pergola, so it will give us a nice barrier between the patio and the parking lot visually to close our patio off and to help control people who are drinking, and they won't walk out into the parking lot. If you take a look at what I have handed out, the bottom picture, the emphasis is on the existing patio, but if you look in the background and if you look at the top picture and the middle picture, you can see the wooden structure of the pergola that has now been constructed. Underneath that is a walkway that is used mostly by performers trying to get onto the stage without having to walk through the audience. And in front of the pergola, we have another raised platform. And we would expect that if you give us the license, the people will be sitting on that platform, and some of those people will purchase a drink at our outside bar. We've had no problems. If you haven't been down to see the area, we think it's beautiful. There's a lot of effort put into the vegetation to make it look nice. We hope you agree that it's a nice addition to the town, and it would be very helpful to us if we didn't have to tell people to don't go up on the high platform and have a drink up there.
Any questions for Mr. Simpson? Does look beautiful over there, I have to say. I don't really have any questions about this.
I think you do a great job. I've seen some of the shows over there, and I look forward to all the shows the remainder of the summer. So keep up the good work.
Well, thank you for that.
It being a public hearing, I do want to offer people the opportunity to come and speak about this issue. If you do want to say something, just come to the podium, state your name for the record. If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public.
Before you close, if I could just say, I do want to emphasize that our ability to serve outside is an hour after the performance. That exists now. We'd like to keep that. In the theater, when the show's over, people tend to linger for five minutes and then they go, but outside, because it's so nice this time of year, people are not in such a hurry to leave. Sorry about that. We don't want to serve all night, but we would like to have that extra hour.
And you said that that was already in...
Yes. Pardon me while I reconstruct your light.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve agenda item seven B with the language at the end of your reading there.
Second.
Moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Continued good luck. Seven C is a public hearing relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956. This is for a Class B limited liquor license, application by Tilly's LLC, doing business as Tilly's Cheese Steaks, 3711 Kingstown Road, West Kingston, by Jonathan Barris, a member for the interior dining area and customer service counter area in accordance with a use variance granted August 15th, 2018 by the zoning board of review, and is further defined in a site plan dated June 5th, 2019, on file in the town clerk's office. Said license is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, filing of a certificate of insurance, evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees in arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the, honorable members of the council, madam clerk. My name is David D'Agostino. I'm an attorney with Gorham &amp; Gorham with an office at 25 Danielson Pike, Situate, Rhode Island. I'm here on behalf of Tilly's LLC, doing business as Tilly's Cheese Steaks. With me is the principal and owner of Tilly's LLC, Mr. Jonathan Barris. We're here before you regarding the Class B limited license that we filed through the online filing system that the town clerk was so kind to walk me through on several occasions. The premises is located at 3711 Kingstown Road. I believe you're all probably familiar with the location. They've been there since late December 2016. Mr. Barris is interested in being able to expand his offering of beverage to his customers. We propose a service area within the building in the designated area listed before you. And I only say that because there are a couple of exterior picnic tables. We're not proposing any alcohol service in those exterior locations. If you have any particular questions relative to the business operations, Mr. Barris will be happy to answer those for you.
What is the seating capacity?
Forty-nine.
And your hours of operation will be?
Right now, they are, and have stayed for quite a long time, they are 11:30 AM until 8:00 PM Sunday through Thursday, and 11:30 AM till nine o'clock on Friday and Saturday.
Do you anticipate a change in the hours with the liquor license?
The only anticipate I would see would be till 10:00 PM. Otherwise, we don't have enough business to stay open any later than that. We also want to be good to the community and neighbors around us because we are in a neighborhood. We don't want to be a bar.
How's business been?
I couldn't be any more grateful to the local community around here. I live in North Kingstown, and it's been fantastic. Nothing is always a problem. Otherwise, it's been very great.
I've enjoyed all the meals I've had there. Do I hear a motion on... Oh, yeah, sorry. This is a public hearing, so I should offer people the opportunity to speak on this one as well. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this issue? All right then. Motion to close the public.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Just make a recommendation. I've had the cheese steaks. I'm a big fan. You guys even deliver as well, so, you know, anyone watching who hasn't tried Tilly's, I strongly recommend it. You know, one of the best in town for sure, so.
Motion to close the public hearing, please.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And do I hear a motion on seven C?
Make a motion to approve seven C.
All right.
Increase the number.
All right, we'll defer the decision on seven C for a moment and bring forward item 13A, which is under new business, a resolution affirming or amending the town's liquor license rules and regulations. Section one, the current number of licenses for each class shall be authorized as indicated below. And for this purpose, we're looking at the Class B limited, and we'd be looking to modify that from four up to five. So do I hear that motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
So moved. All in favor of moving the Class B limited liquor licenses from four to five, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries, and we can come back to seven C now.
So I'll make a motion that we approve item seven C.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And item seven D is a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the town code, Chapter 13, personnel, Article II, sexual harassment policy. This is shown on your exhibit one, attached to your agenda. Amy is here to give us a short presentation.
To provide some background, in 1997, Rhode Island passed a law requiring all employers to promote a workplace free from sexual harassment and adopt a policy against sexual harassment and any subsequent retaliation. The law further states the policy must include a description and examples of sexual harassment, a description of the process for filing internal complaints, including the addresses and phone numbers of the persons to whom complaints should be made, a statement of the range of consequences for those employees who are found to have committed harassment, and it must also identify appropriate state and federal employment discrimination enforcement agencies, as well as directions on how to contact these agencies. So in 1998, our town council adopted the existing ordinance and policy as found in the town code, Part Three, Chapter 13, Personnel, Article Three, Sexual Harassment. Before you this evening are some proposed amendments to the current ordinance and policy, and these include general updates throughout, but primarily reflect the council's request to expand, this isn't working, to expand the ordinance to include not just town employees, but also elected and appointed officials. So the scope has been updated to reflect the town council members, school committee members, members of appointed, excuse me, boards and commissions, as well as any other appointed members, officials of the town. I did prepare some statements, but my computer's not working, so I'm going to have to go off the cuff. The scope section has been updated to reflect the expansion of not just employees. The definitions and examples of harassment have been updated generally, primarily to include, as the town manager indicated in the work session, not just sexual harassment, but harassment in general. Both state and federal definitions of harassment do include sexual harassment, so this just incorporates that change. The next section, issuance and circulation of the policy statement identifies that the town personnel administrator is responsible for administering circulation to employees, and that, and my capacity as the director of administrative services, I would coordinate with any elected or appointed officials upon higher election or appointment. The next section, the reporting and investigation procedure, you'll note that there are significant proposed amendments to this section, primarily to address the expansion and the scope, as well as provide better clarity and definition about the process. One item of note is that there are multiple reporting channels, multiple people within the reporting channels intentionally designed so that there, no one is ever going to have to be required to report an alleged harassment claim to the person that they are reporting the claim against. There's multiple people identified through the reporting channel that they can go to. The statement and range of consequences section clearly identifies that the employees are subject to discipline if found to have committed sexual harassment or harassment in general or any act of retaliation, up to and including termination of employment. Members of town boards and commissions or any other appointed officials are subject to discipline up to and including, but not limited to, removal by the town council from their position. And then elected officials, including the town council and the school committee, because the town does not have any process for a recall, if the elected official is found to have committed sexual harassment or harassment or retaliation, they would be subject to public censure. At this point, there really is no further discipline that could be taken. Per state law, we are required to include in the policy and in our ordinance, reference to enforcement agencies. So we have two that are listed, the Rhode Island Commission for Human Rights at the state level, and at the federal level, the EEOC, although it is noted that given different circumstances, different situations, we have in the past also referred folks to the local police department, the state police department, or the ethics commission. Does any council member have any questions, or if the town manager or town solicitor have anything further to add?
Thank you for taking this on and preparing these changes, which are, you know, well-timed.
I just have one question, Amy. Has the perpetrator notified that the complaint has been lodged?
So as part of the policy and the ordinance, we do indicate that we, as the town and as the investigating, one of the investigating authorities maintains confidentiality. We certainly would reach out to someone after speaking with the person who's filing the claim, to, whether it's an employee, an elected official, an appointed official, reach out to them, to speak with them about the claim, again, maintaining confidentiality as much as we can, but certainly to get their perspective, their input, so they certainly would be notified. This policy doesn't necessarily identify what that process is.
Right. That concerns me a little bit, that the perpetrator or whatever, or the, you know, the complainant isn't mentioned here. When would they be notified? Would they be notified immediately? Do you notify them? Do you notify them after finding the allegation to be concerning, credible, however that is determined? So explain to me like the timeline.
Sure. I think initially, the, you know, initial report would be reviewed and in concert with the town manager, legal, really anybody, you know, as part of the investigating authority. If it's found not to be credible, we could make a determination, you know, to notify the person or to not notify the person. Certainly, if it is determined to be credible, we would certainly reach out, I hate to say it, but to get their perspective, to get their side of the story.
Part of the investigation.
Yes.
I also think any accusation that someone should be notified, that someone has accused them, credible or not. I find it somewhat problematic that if someone accused me of something, even though they were, it was deemed not credible, that I wouldn't be aware that that had happened. I'd like to see that incorporated.
Okay. Okay. We can look at that and see if there's model policies about that aspect and bring that back to you.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
I think overall, this is a much improved policy with some, you know, needed changes. So overall, I think it's a very good document. I understand your concern, Deb, and concur, but overall, this is a big improvement, I think. Any...
Just a couple of observations. One, I do think that we can make a minor change to the definition just to add an "or". I wish I had caught it sometime in our process here. Just to make sure that this is not an exclusive list. It shouldn't be cumulative. Any one of these behaviors is harassment, so I think we should just stick an "or" after the second sentence. Minor amendment. And then to address Councilwoman Kelso's concern, I don't think that it would arise to the level of a significant change if an amendment were offered tonight requiring that the administration shall establish appropriate mechanisms for notifying persons complained of. That would leave the administration the ability to adjust to the circumstances, and I think you could, you could do that without this being a substantive change that would require republication of the ordinance.
And how about terms for revisiting this? And how about terms for revisiting this? So I don't see anything where maybe we should be, because harassment and we're in uncharted territory, right? So the definitions thereof may change with technology, right? Things that we don't have in our control at this moment. So I think I'd also like to see, and this policy must be revisited or, you know, brought before the council for sanctioning or changing every two years or whatever, whatever anybody thinks. But I don't want to leave it static. It's been there since 1990, whatever, and now it's 20 years later and we're looking at all these major changes, which is a good thing. I mean, I'm happy we're doing it. I just think we should be doing it more often.
So again, I think that that could be done here tonight without it being a major alteration to the proposed ordinance. I think you can do that by simply sticking in a provision at the end of this that says, and the administration or the personnel, the director of administrative services, the personnel administrator, whoever the council deems most appropriate, shall
Provide an update or
Updates on the ordinance, you know, give a timeline or
Well, I think as needed, or
Not less than
You know, not letting it go more than two or three years, I truly believe, right now, till we make sure we've got it right.
So if council has any interest in any, any one of those three or all three of those modifications, I can, how well with legal counsel and we can offer some language if that's something the council would like to do. We're still in public hearing at this point, but
Yeah. So Deb, two or three years is what you'd like to see?
I think, you know, maybe in two years, we want to say five years from now because nothing was substantive enough to make us change our minds about what we're looking at right now. But I think we're in somewhat uncharted territory here.
I mean, I think it's definitely a valid
I think we need to make sure we look at it soon, you know.
On an as-needed basis, no longer than two years?
That's, you know, I don't know. Whatever, three is fine, you know, I think two is better, but
I'm happy with two or three. Let's go with two. So two years, get that, or as needed. And I think, is everybody else happy with those two other suggested changes? The "or," pretty simple.
Like the notification.
And the notification? Okay. Excellent. Okay. Any other questions for Amy or Rob? Okay. At this point then, it is a public hearing. Please feel free to come up to the podium, let us know if you have any feelings on this ordinance or suggested change.
How are you this morning, this evening rather? I haven't been around. Bob Trager, Succotash Road. Gonna be 80 November. I don't know if I'm looking forward to it or not. I am kinda looking forward to it because that's when the snow falls. There's, I've been wanting to come every week, be honest with you. I just don't get here. I crash about that time. But today I had a fairly easy day. And you guys have had some pretty easy meetings too, because if I'm not correct, I think I tuned in one time a little late and you were already gone. So, that's good. And this is a perfect, oh, I didn't see you guys over there. There's actually a few people here. That's a wonderful thing, you know. Narragansett, you'd have no problem, you'd have all, you'd have the place filled right up, the regulars. Anyway, I'm gonna take a couple of minutes, do you mind? I have no idea what I was gonna say when I come here, but I know there's things on my mind. I'm hoping they're gonna pop in. One thing that's been on my mind is the New York Times' recent
Mr. Trager, you know that this is the public hearing on this specific issue. We will have
Oh, this is on the sexual, okay, right. Sorry. I had something, I was thinking on that and I drifted, I drifted.
You can come back for
I'm a drifter, drifter. My mind drifts, drifts in hopefully good places some of the time. Yeah, on this public hearing, I didn't hear anything about an ongoing sort of educational component that, I think this issue was so large that it's way beyond just what goes on with the town. I know that's your main thing, but it's more than that. It's more than that. Just on the news tonight on PBS, I mean, Epstein, is the guy's his name, Epstein? Am I getting the right, wrong, is that his name? I'm not good with names, but I am good with ideas, I think, a little bit. And this guy got away with murder with trafficking young girls and sexually abusing them and everything else, and they let him go wherever he was first. Now, New York's gonna prosecute him apparently on, because it's a crime that the five-year limitation doesn't hold. It's too serious, too serious a crime. And, I mean, we all know from the past few years how this has been highlighted in the United States. And in some countries, in certain respects, it's 100 times worse, and in other countries, it's probably better. What I mean by better is that there's more respect shown to the sexes, women and men. But irrespective of that, it's, it needs to be more than just written down on a fence, on a thing. I think that, I think somebody alluded, I think, Deborah, I think you alluded to it in a way in what you was talking, it needs to be something that's focused on regularly, regularly. Even if it's just to talk about it for a while. Dialogue is missing in this country now. That's being said every day, every time I hear any learned person in a panel discussion on C-SPAN talking about it, and we're losing contact with each other. And young people now are already, there's a whole group now that, I can't, I wish I could give you the exact things, but I'm no good at it, but I listened to one gentleman the other day speaking, and he says we have to love our enemies. We have to learn to love our enemies. It's the only, it's the only path to sell, to get us out of this mess. And I can't give you, he did it well, but I can't give it to you. But it, believe it or not, it makes sense when you hear it from somebody that's thought about it and understands it. But it's a hard thing to do. It's a hard thing to do, very hard. Within families, never mind about with strangers. So, I don't know, I'm gonna wait, I'll wait and, this isn't even the public forum, I forgot about that. So I'll come back in the public forum. I wanna say a couple of more things, but I don't wanna, like you said, this is about the sexual, but this is an overall overshadowing problem that interconnects with all of the other problems. It's what people care about, who they care about, and how they show what they care about. And I think this is, it's big time. It's a big time thing. It's more than just a little thing here, you know, it's a major problem, societal problem. If you don't mind, I'm gonna come back up.
I don't mind.
This might, this might be the only chance I get. I might be dead tomorrow.
Amy, I see that you might have something
I do, yes. Thank you. So Mr. Trager raises a very good point. One of the things that the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust offers us as employees is training, training programs, and one of the trainings that they do offer is sexual harassment training for new employees as well as existing employees who wish to have a refresher. Given the expanded scope as proposed, that would now also encompass elected and appointed officials. So that would certainly be something that we would offer, not only to new employees but also new elected and appointed officials, as well as on a refresher basis. So we typically have that once or twice a year.
Any other public comments? No? Any other comments up here at the table? How has the progress gone on those amendments? Well then, I think we could have a motion to close this public hearing as well.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we might need a little help on the motion 47D.
All right. So three amendments have been discussed. The first would be a simple motion to amend Section 1354A2 by inserting the word "or" after the semicolon.
Do you want us to do these one motion at a time? We can do that.
Can you incorporate the three changes into your motion to approve?
Yeah, that's what I would prefer.
The second motion that's been, or modification that's been proposed is a amendment to Section 1353 by inserting a subsection four that would read, "The town shall be responsible for developing and administering a procedure to ensure that all persons accused of harassment shall be timely informed of the accusations against them and given all due opportunity to respond." And then the third would be to amend Section 1353 by inserting a subsection five to read, "The town shall be responsible for reviewing this ordinance and reporting on its application to the council no less than every two years."
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 7D incorporating those changes.
Yeah. Here a second.
I'll second that.
Do we have discussion on this motion?
Rob, can you read me those again, please?
I'll do it because Dale may not be able to read my handwriting. I move to, I'm sorry, amendment of Section 1354A2 by inserting the word "or" after the semicolon. Amendment to Section 1353 by inserting a new subsection four to read, quote, "The town shall be responsible for developing and administering a procedure to ensure that all persons accused of harassment shall be timely informed of the allegations against them and given all due opportunity to respond." And then the third, amend Section 1353 by inserting a subsection five to read, "The town shall be responsible for reviewing and reporting this ordinance and reporting on its application to the council no less than every two years."
I think we had decided on an as-needed basis, no longer than two years?
Good. So I think we need to amend that.
Does that do it? Does that do it for you before we?
So you could, the language would, you could amend that last one to say, amend Section 1353 by inserting a new subsection five to read, "The town shall be responsible for reviewing this ordinance and reporting on its application on an as-needed basis but at least once every two years."
Yes. So that does it?
Do we need a motion for that, or is that?
Motion on the floor now? Just a motion to amend to include that incorporated language, you can incorporate it by rights. Is that a vote?
So I'll amend my motion to include the new language.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Now, any discussion?
I'm comfortable with the changes. I'm comfortable with the new policy, and I think we certainly can visit any of these policies anytime we want, but I'm happy to have that in there, sure, sure.
Okay. I'm comfortable too. Thank you, Amy.
And I'll just say thank you, Amy, for preparing this, and Rob, for helping making it happen. You know, I think Mr. Trager's comments are accurate, and this is a huge issue, part of many broader intersecting issues, and it's good that we can take small steps to improve what we're doing on a local level. It is important in light of the Me Too movement that this is done on a broader societal basis, but one small step at a time down here in South Kingston. So I'm happy that we're able to get this done. So, all in favor of this amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. That brings us to Item 8, which is communications. And Item 8A is an email dated June 15, 2019, from Scott and Lily Rippey, expressing concerns with regulation of the outdoor discharge of firearms. It was continued from our last meeting. Are, is anybody here to speak on this issue? What do you guys think? We can continue it again?
I think we talked during the work session about instructing the town manager to, no, wait, this wasn't this communication item, right? This is the one to reach out? I think, is this the communication we talked about, having the town manager to reach out to the person who wrote this email to follow up? So I would make a motion to instruct the town manager to that and place it on file. Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. 8B is a communication dated June 10, 2019, from Arthur P. Cody, concerning a delinquent tax penalty and the town's policies concerning such fees. It's received and placed on file. And what will we do with this one?
I'll make a motion that the council waive the penalty in full contingent upon the taxpayer meeting the criteria specified by the state statute which would allow the council to waive the penalty.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that for the purpose of discussion. So I do love the sentiment, Rory. It is a heart-wrenching letter we've received, but I don't, I am not comfortable opening up this lot, this path for taxpayers to take. It is state law that's, has driven what happened in Town Hall, and they abided by the state I think we could probably handle this privately and reach out to Mr. Cody or Cotay and let him know that we, privately, personally, I will do that and let him know that I feel his pain and I understand his objections, but I don't think the town should be modifying the state statute. I think we're opening up ourselves for a flood of similar heart-wrenching stories. They're out there.
Just to put another option that didn't get brought up at the work session.
I can't hear you.
There is another, just another option that you could choose to take. There's another statute that allows you to just apply the penalty to the late payment rather than accelerating the payment and applying rather than accelerating the payment and applying it to all the quarters. You could apply it to one quarter. So that's another option, too. You do have the authority to do that.
Mr. President, if you'd like, we can certainly take this back and report to the council on a method, methods most suitable to achieve the objective of the motion or just a general report. This is, at this point, correspondence. It certainly could be deemed an official request for, and I would suggest it is, an official request for relief, but it doesn't necessarily need to be handled tonight, and I'd be happy to have the tax assessor and my office look into, you know, all of the sort of details around this policy and make a recommendation or at least put together descriptive material that the council could act on so that you have a full understanding of the implications, how many of these do we get, how many of these, you know, are likely to be out there, and what the state statutes say, all in one place so that you've got a good explanation as to what the authority is, what the past practice has been, the rationale for the statutes and the rationale for previous policy.
I'd be more comfortable with more information.
Would you care to re?
So I'll make the motion to direct the town manager to report back to the council with a recommendation in regards to this communication.
I'll second that.
We, just for Robert's rules of order's sake, we had a motion and a second on the floor, so we would have to withdraw that first, I believe. Correct? So first with.
I'd like to withdraw my original motion. And further, I'd like to motion that the council instruct the town manager to report back at a subsequent meeting in regards to a recommendation to this communication.
Now, a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Item 8C is a communication dated July 1, 2019, from Cheryl Hartnett, submitting her resignation from the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee, effective August 1. We received that and placed it on file, and what would we like to do?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation and place it on file and to instruct the clerk to send a letter of thanks to Ms. Hartnett for her time served.
Second.
So moved. All in, well, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries as well. And that brings us to Item 9, comments from interested citizens. Now's your chance.
Well, I was sitting there listening to this, actually. No matter what goes on, there's interesting things about it, no matter what it is. Every person is interesting in its own way, if you take the time to listen to whoever it is that you're listening to. Anyway, I'm gonna just say a couple of things about, did anybody, does anybody know about the New York Times list of where we stand in the world in about five to 10 different categories? Education, health, everything you can think of, right? A whole list of categories. And let's just throw the average out. We're probably 19th and, 19th or 23rd in the world compared to the other major industrialized, whatever you wanna call them, countries that are, that are, you know, have an economy and whatever. And then at the end of their little article, or they gave, oh, oh, there are some things that America is on top. We're on top. Incarceration of people, drug addiction. You know, here's why I'm saying this. I'm not trying to be a negative person, but we shouldn't delude ourselves because we live, I've said this kind of thing in a way. I know where we live. We're in South County of Rhode Island. Rhode Island hasn't got the greatest reputation for political correctness, let me tell you that right now, if you don't already know it. I know you know better than I do. But nevertheless, I call it living in God's country down here in Rhode Island, in South County. We have good schools. We have good people. We have low crime. And I suppose because of the stock market and the one thing that, you know, if you happen to be lucky and you had some money, you know, you've tripled your money or quadrupled your money in the last few years. So people are happy. You know what really indicates that? How about, how about the 4th of July fireworks this year? Were they great or not? Where did you go? I mean, I was at Skip's again. I just stay at Skip's, and they're all around me. You can see all the way to, just one of the ones at Great Island was probably a $10,000 presentation that some individual did. And then I went home after a party with a very nice person in Snug Harbor, had about 100 people at his house, and he was gonna set off a huge fire. I was too tired to stay. So I went home, and I sat on my porch, and I looked towards the oyster bar. He must have put one on. It was great. I mean, this was the next day. So here's what I'm getting at. People are excited about being Americans, and they have well reason, they have good reason to do something. We are the best country in the world, no doubt about it, in many ways. But in many ways, we're not. And I think we gotta start looking at it as, and the only way it's gonna be done is through guys like you, gals and guys like you up there at the town council. You have to look beyond just that, you know, what road needs to be plowed. And maybe you are. What is the biggest, we have a person that's running for president of the United States. Now, his main issue is climate change. The governor of Denver, Colorado, rather, I think, I think that's the guy. I don't, I'm no good with the names. I, Pamela, I can remember a few of them, you know, but I'm not good at it. And I, I mean, we got Elizabeth Warren, an unbelievable mind for public good. But they all have their, they have this problem to pick an issue that people are gonna grab onto. The problem is all of the issues are important, every one of them. So they're, I don't know how anybody communicates that. And I also know that when the economy is good, if it is good, but here's what is good. People are working. That's a good thing. But they can't afford to buy a house. They can't afford to feed their family. One out of five American children lives in poverty. Now, maybe not in South Kingstown, but I'll bet you don't have to go too darn far to have it to be, I'll bet there's places within 100, 200 miles of here where it might be two out of five. So. I always come back, my mind just clicked into it. I'm just, if you don't mind, you can throw me out when you wanna throw me out, because I feel like talking a little bit. But I remember a long time ago, I wrote a term paper, I think in a graduate class. The topic was caring, and I didn't pick up on it like I should have for the rest of my life, because it's all about caring. It's all about caring. Like that guy said, you gotta love your enemies. You gotta figure out how to, what he means is, you gotta learn, you've got to figure out how to communicate with them. I don't wanna mention his name, so that's why I'm trying to avoid, I don't wanna politicize anything. But when you hug and call people that have killed hundreds of thousands of their own people and call them good guys, you got a problem. That's not what this guy was talking about. You gotta love them, but not the way some people are loving them. Anyway, that's another story. I don't even wanna get into that. Anyway, I wish I knew myself if I was a person that was better, a better communicator with the, all the games you can play with. Everybody's got a computer in front of them, you know. I never get into it, I never will. I, I just, I don't have the literary ability. I don't have the, a lot of abilities that you need to do that. But a lot of people do have those abilities, but they're not gonna solve the problems in the world. It's action. And I'll mention one more thing that, the climate change thing is a world, global issue, which is an interesting thing. It is something the world could get behind. And in the governor's idea, you know, that's what we have to do. You know, we're not going to the moon. Instead of that, we're gonna have all-electric cars. Every time you build a building, it's gonna be a building that is energy efficient. You're gonna just, you gotta throw the money at it. Somehow, you gotta throw the money at it. And that's what, that's the big, big thing in the United States. I get the biggest kick out of it. I'll leave with this one, I guess. I mean, it's, it's common sense to me that there's so much money in this country when they can say over and over again that one-tenth of 1% owns, I don't know, like 90% of the country, in the sense that they have the money to distribute the way they choose. And in living in Rhode Island, if you live in where I am, you see the, you know, you see the banana boats go by with four, 300 Yamahas on them. But if you go to Newport, then you see a little higher end. Why should go to Monaco? Well, I mean, there's a million places to go. There's a lot of money out there, and it's used, and those are all good things. See, this is where it gets complicated. Well, somebody had to build those boats. Somebody had to build those $50 million houses. So somebody gets something out of it, but it's such a closed group that it is, this is not gonna work. And I don't know if I'll see the end of it, but my grandkid with, that was over the house, he's gonna be two years old in August, he's gonna see the end of it. And I don't like the looks of the end of it, guys and gals. I don't really like the looks of the end of it. We're all, you know, probably not gonna have to deal with it that much, but this is different than they talked about before, I believe. This is such a disparis, disparity in, we have a complicated thing. We have a disparity in wealth, but then we also have mass communication, so now people can see it. Just listening to the advertisements on television, who are they directed to? If there were 100 people in this room, well, there again, I'd say in South County, maybe they are directed to quite a few of the people in South County, but I'd say the majority, I'm surprised that people don't rebel against listening to those ads. They make it look like everybody can live in a, in a multimillion-dollar house, you know? Some people are just living in three rooms with five or 10 people and mattresses on the floor, you know? We have a major problem. I think about it a lot. I don't really know what to do about it. My own personal situation is pretty good right now. I could just forget about it. But I never, I never was like that. It's hard to forget when you know something's wrong and you're not doing anything about it. So I think, I'd like to just ask you one question. Just say, say I asked you one question. What are we doing about global warming in South County?
Well, I think that's a good question, although this is not a question-and-answer session.
No.
But I just, I don't mean a whole long thing. We can pick up on some themes perhaps you've touched upon here. Thank you. I would just wanna ask first if there's anybody else who wants to speak for comment.
Oh, yeah. Believe me, I don't wanna get, I usually won't get up. I won't get up until somebody else. I can't keep quiet.
Well, are there comments? It's public comment, so are there comments from the council? I will say that I had the pleasure of attending with the town manager, as well as, I think Bryant was there, a meeting at the rec center involving some state officials dealing with resilience in our town, because beyond just becoming more efficient and investing in renewable energy, as I think we've done a good job of, we do need to take actions to prepare for the effects of climate change that can't be mitigated. And so this was, you know, a very good workshop, drew in a lot of leaders around the town. I think it'll offer us the opportunity to apply for some federal funding, state funding in order to make improvements, you know, such as protecting Mattoonik Beach Road, some other sort of infrastructure upgrades. So this is certainly something that's present in the decisions that the town is making. I do hope that other towns will follow our lead in a lot of these issues. So I hope that that gives you some answer. I'm happy to talk about it at greater length with you on some other occasion.
It's a good thing. It's a, anything you do is a good thing. If you use paper rather than plastic, it's a good thing. That's the thing that we have to push more and more. And I mean, I know people are doing it. I'm not saying the world, the country is oblivious to this, but we're not doing enough. They all say that, all the scientists say it anyway. We're not doing, we're not, we're not, we gotta, we better get on it, you know, and what it will require is a degree of sacrifice in certain areas. Usually, it's time. The things that we, you know, disposable, we have a disposable society. It's been like that for years. It, you know, they don't make anything to last. They'll make a beautiful car, and there's one thing that's gonna go wrong with it, and you're gonna have to get rid of it in 10 years. That's how they figure it. They do it. It's a, it's a way of doing things. But the plastics and all that stuff, we have to figure out. Look at the Pacific, I mean, it's just that we all need to focus on it, and how do we do that if we don't talk about it? I think if you get people psyched, the more, the height, the higher the awareness, the higher the moving towards solutions will be. The less awareness, and I think apathy right now, because the economy, according to some people, is great, it isn't great. It's only great for some of us. It's great for me right now. I tell you, I never would have said that. Even two years ago, I wouldn't have, a year ago, I wouldn't have said that, but I mean, you know, I sold something and I'm all set. So, so what? You know, that's just me. But we worked 43 years, like my wife said the other day. She hasn't had a 4th of July weekend off in 43 years, and not a Memorial Day weekend either. We worked seven days a week for 43 years for a good part of the summer months. For, and longer than that, when we had a wholesale business going, we had to sell, we had to sell it because we can't make it. Now, we couldn't make it in this economy. And we got, we had it all, in a way. I don't know. It's complicated stuff. I got a small mind, but even my small mind can see some of this stuff, and it's scary as hell.
Thank you, Mr. Drager. All right. Any comments at this point from the council? You're welcome. I appreciate, yes. Okay, that'll bring us to the town manager's report.
Great. I'll start the report by noting that you will be receiving an email this week looking for dates for a facilities tour this month. We're trying to get this done either next week or the week after. Schedules are always tough in the summer, but I think if we end up having to do more than one tour, that's great, but we do need to, we do need to get folks around. Let me start with just an update on where we are with the hospital land swap discussion. We've got a meeting with DEM here in Town Hall on Wednesday at 2:00. Terry Murphy and I, with some help from folks in the planning department, and Kim O'Connell over at the hospital have put together a proposed park expansion plan that would deal with this swap so that we end up with this property that we've discussed previously in exchange for the field next to the hospital, which the hospital has expressed a strong need for. That meeting... That meeting will be with Megan Dupree, and I know that Jenick Coit had been rumored to be interested in attending that meeting. I've not received confirmation as of today that the director will be at that meeting, but she may in fact, and I'll notify the council as soon as we're aware of exactly who's gonna be in that meeting. At this point, we know it is a meeting with the planning division and the hospital. It may be a meeting with the director as well. These other items are items that have continued over, the significant challenges. The council got a full briefing on those last meeting if anyone needs. I guess the Housing Authority project is a little bit new. There's a number of items that have come up recently, including mold issue at a apartment building where a number of Section 8 voucher recipients reside, number of other issues. And at the council's request, I have requested that the Housing Authority commissioners meet with the council at a public work session at the next council meeting. So 6:30 on the 22nd, the invitation has gone out and hopefully that meeting will go off without any issues. The school facilities improvement project, the only things really to report here are that the school committee has approved the hiring of a local firm, I wanna say Bentley Construction, to do the oversight of the work related to the security improvements that's being done this summer and into the fall. And the request for proposals for a owner's representative on the larger project, including the resubmission of the Stage 2 application and all of the work that comes prior to approval of the bond and then all of the work after the approval of the bond, that, those three chunks of work are now on the street and the notice period has gotten to the point where proposers or potential proposers have already asked the questions that they had about that RFP. Those questions have been answered and we're expecting applications in this week, I believe. And I think the school committee is looking at having a decision on who to make that offer to on the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken, but this month, and try to get all of this underway so that there is an owners rep onboard to do the review of the resubmission in August and September. So there's, there's a lot of movement going on there. Successes, big news from my perspective is we have made an offer and the offer has been accepted for a finance director. The gentleman is Zach Saul. Zachary Saul will be coming to us from the state. He's been working with the Board of Higher Education, previously worked for the State Retirement Fund where he was a CFO. I'm really looking forward to having him onboard. He is energetic, creative. I think I've told a number of council members that I was looking forward to a point in time when we had a chief innovation officer, and I think we may have found one here. He's a very energetic and capable young man and I think we've got a winner. So we'll see where that goes. He has not given us a start date. I'm thinking the 22nd of this month may also be important for that reason. Great 4th of July event again this year, went off without incident. Really, Terry and her crew and the police department were just phenomenal. Oat ramp repair made by highways so that the, the big drop-off is no longer there. It's got gravel, which will last as long as gravel lasts while people are powering up onto their trailers. I would remind folks that if you can avoid it, powering up is just a sure way for us to have to go out there and make those repairs and it scours the gravel away from the ramp and at that point, the next user is in jeopardy of bottoming out because there's just not enough material there. So if you can winch your boat onto the, onto the trailer, it's far better for everybody. The highway division, I know that this was reported as a DEM or a C R M C success, but it was in fact the South Kingstown Highway Division that removed a llama from the beach this past week and we count that as a win. We also had a PSA from the U.S. Attorney General's Office filmed at the senior center. This will be a series of PSAs, public service announcements that will be broadcast across the country. And if you, if you happen to see one while you're at an airport somewhere in the country where you think you recognize a fireplace, you probably do because it's our senior center. That'll, that's kind of a neat one. Senior Center service statistics, just wanted to give you a quick update on these. We are, again, seeing a steady increase in services. This is fitness classes year over year and last month to, well, May to June, and you are seeing a steady increase. Even where we've seen a decrease this month or in June on transportation for the center, transportation to the center, it looks very much like it may end up just being a blip. It was a decline in lunch participants. It may just be a decline in lunch participants during that month. And the map of the, the meeting, as part of the plan that I described, looking at the expansion of our park services, this map was produced, it's actually a map that was put together originally for the comprehensive plan and this map will appear in the comprehensive plan. It also appears in the expansion plan that I described earlier. This is park distribution in South Kingstown. The green bands, the dark green band being two miles, the light green bands being one mile, the beige being half a mile, and then the neighborhood parks in red and the community parks in blue. I will note that the areas that are not covered by parks, or at least within two miles of a park, are actually diminishing. Noise Farm does not sort of appear as a buffer here. We do still have some need for coverage up in the northwest, some need for coverage in the, in the west on the, in the central area, and some need for coverage down south on the west side. Interesting map, though. And that's the report.
All right. Anything from the solicitor? All right. Well, that actually brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. And the time is 8:48.